You know the great ones at Rivermount here.
Yeah.
What, what other shark is prevalent here?
Uh. No, typically most, most plants I see are juvenile great ones.
Yeah, and they're just curious, isn't it?
I, I've been going on ten years to check up in, off, uh, seawater, seawater, a year back. In ten years, I've only seen one. It was a juvenile, like, you know, five or six years ago. I think it's just one of his own business.
Cause these things are having their big, big sea, right? They used to have their big sea on top of them. If the downed waters get warmer in there, they're having their big seas that migrate to the south.
Yeah.
It's interesting, cause I had it on my phone for a while. Shark shark, and show wood sharks release up north, beeline down to, just like that, iron quite a few ways, something like that, down off, 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 or many of them are born. And females go out, directly out, females go a thousand miles.
Yeah.
And then they come back to do the thing. But then you should have your own. We do this way, you live out here.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long way, it's helped a little bit, you know, unless it does go side of the day, right? So the idea of swimming in the bay, it's like, I can't even imagine. It's really cool, toxic smudge and.
It's really close, between both sides, it's quite different.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, who you know is Jane Farkas, turn your eyes to me.
Yeah, you're not too.
Oh. I have six oh two.
So with that, let's get our meeting started, if we may. Hi Kara. Uh, welcome to the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting of Wednesday, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Yes. Commissioner Abby.
I'm here.
Okay. Kind of like, just pass over there, okay. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Farkas is absent. Commissioner McCarty?
Here.
Commissioner Zucker?
Here.
Vice Chair Lagerquist?
Here.
Chair Comden?
I am here, thank you. Okay, let's go to, uh, public communications. This is the time set aside for, uh, during our meeting for the members of the public to address the commit, the committee on planning related issues other than scheduled agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do not.
Okay, very good. We'll move on from public communication to the consent item, which is the approval of the July thirteenth meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Do we have any comments or clarifications? Yes, Commissioner McCarty.
Um, my comment is, uh, my name was misspelled a couple times in the minutes. If that could be corrected, I'd appreciate it.
That will be taken care of. With that change, yes, Commissioner Abby.
I just noticed that nowhere in the agenda item, like the last meeting, was it talked about fire codes or, or fire risks? I know that's sort of what it's all about, that they need to use, but I don't see the word fire anywhere in the minutes.
Okay, hang on just one second. Your microphone is not working, is that correct? So should we have him move or what's recommended?
Here, let me go over there and.
You can use Kara's.
It can be a little tricky, you just kind of have to.
Thank you, my buddy Kara, let me use her mic.
Okay, very good.
Um, the ADU fire, uh, the codes, the, the, uh, in the minutes, I never, never saw the word fire, and that's what it was all about, was the high-risk zones and whether or not they would be allowed in high-risk or very high-risk. And I just didn't see that. I don't know if that's important or not.
So you're recommending that the word fire be put in there because even though it might be assumed that it's pertaining to that, it doesn't clearly state that?
It's not obvious, so anyone who's not familiar with it would not know that that was what the whole thing was about.
Okay, that's a good point. Staff, do we have any recommendation here?
I mean, it would be in the exhibit, I guess. People would have to go.
Yeah, so there's two, two, two perspectives. One is that, uh, well, I just found a typo as well. Um, so I want to add, add that. The, an interested party who looked at the staff report would be able to see that, but if we want to provide a little more information, um, we could add a line, an informational line sentence somewhere that, uh, uh, which would be a factual statement that the primary purpose of this was about the ADUs in, 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 in the high fire zones. We could just.
That would be fine with me, I'd like that.
Yeah, okay. That's not something we need to vote on, can we just make that request?
Would it be better?
Uh, you can just make that request and, um, you can make a motion to approve the minutes as modified.
Okay.
And if, if, if the maker of the motion could add, correct all spellings, names as well as, um, as I said, I've caught, I've caught at least another word, uh, misspelling of accessory in here, so if that could be part of the motion.
Okay, uh, let's clarification. Uh, Commissioner Abby, are you suggesting that the minutes do not reflect the word fire or everything from the last agenda meeting?
No, just in, in the title or somewhere, I, I like Mr. Gillie's suggestion that there be an informational line. That was just that one agenda item regarding ADUs.
Yeah, but that was on last meeting's agenda, not on the agenda minutes, post facto. Is that what you're saying?
He means the minutes, right?
The minutes.
Okay, on the minutes, okay. So that addition will be made and all typos corrected on the meeting minutes. And I guess we should vote on this, is this what you're suggesting?
Yes, someone needs to make a motion and then a second.
Very good, we'll go through that protocol. Would like, someone like to move those two items?
I would like to move both of those.
Okay, Commissioner Abby, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Zucker. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Abby?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Farkas is absent. Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagerquist?
Uh, I was absent last week, so I'll recuse myself from the vote.
Chair Comden?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, commissioners. Okay, we move on to the formal item before us today. Project one four six zero eight, Pacific Wave Design Review. Staff, are you ready for your presentation?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jane.
The current item on the agenda is item number two, which is a request for a major design review, coastal development permit, and exceptions for a mixed-use building. The site is located near the Thompson Boulevard-Sand Home Road intersection in Midtown between U-Haul and Carquest Auto Parts. Existing contexts of the surrounding area include commercial, institutional, and residential uses along Thompson Boulevard. Nearby projects include Sand Home Village at the Thompson-Sand Home Intersection, Thompson Village to the east of the site, and Tom Cruise at the Thompson-Santa Cruz Intersection next to Ventura Music Hall. The Sand Home Village and Thompson Village projects are currently under construction and consist of multifamily residential units. The Tom Cruise project, project is entitled and consists of multifamily residential units, two of which are live-work units. The applicant for the Pacific Wave Project submitted this application for the project in July of twenty twenty, with the most recent submittal of spring of this year. Initially, the project's scope was for a three-story mixed-use building with over twenty-three hundred square feet of ground floor commercial space and eight units above. The scope has since been modified to reflect the current request. The project was reviewed by the DRC in April of this year, and they were generally supportive of the overall building design and landscaping design. DRC forwarded a recommendation to the planning commission on a three-to-zero vote for design refinement without further art deco elements, provide smooth plaster as a finish, and use dark-sky compliant lighting. The applicant, post the DRC meeting back in April, has since revised the design to reduce art deco elements on the building and add smooth stucco as a finish for the tower element. Staff believes the applicant has complied and has satisfied all the recommendations from the DRC. The Pacific Wave Project consists of one three-story mixed-use building with over nineteen hundred square feet of ground floor commercial space with eight apartments above on a podium structure with alley access. The maximum building height is forty-seven feet to the top of the elevator tower. Ground floor area is over fifty-eight hundred square feet. Exterior building materials include a mix of concrete, stucco, and metal siding. Parking is both covered and uncovered in the rear portion of the site. Ground floor commercial space is designed as a storefront, frontage type along Thompson Boulevard. The multifamily residential units have access both from Thompson Boulevard as well as parking in the rear of the site. Character of the building design reflects architectural elements consistent with some of the elements in the nineteen ninety-seven design guidelines for Thompson Boulevard that include the tower element as well as store, large storefront windows along Thompson Boulevard. This project provides open space in the form of an interior courtyard on the second level as well as a roof deck at the top of the building. The courtyard is over eight hundred square feet, the roof deck is over nineteen hundred square feet. These areas are landscaped and include amenities. Landscaping along the ground floor, along the ground level includes street trees along Thompson Boulevard as well as trees in the rear, along with shrubbery on the perimeter of the site, which helps to further screen parking in the rear. Exceptions. Similar form-based standards in the downtown specific plan and parkland specific plan, uh, in this instance, the Midtown Corridor's Development Code, which requires new construction to meet three different sets of standards at this location. Those standards include zone and development, building type, and frontage type. Zone and development deals with setbacks, parking, and building height. Building type deals with how and where buildings are accessed, open space, and how height and massing are distributed throughout the design. Frontage type standards deal with size, configuration, and specific elements of street-facing facades of buildings. The proposed proj, project design triggers the need for two exceptions. The first exception is for parking placement. The T four point five zoning district requires off-street parking to be placed in the rear half of the site. The box shaded in red on the screen represents the rear fifty percent of this one hundred foot lot. The yellow area with the dashed red line represents the six parking spaces outside of the rear half of the lot. It is not possible nor feasible for parking to be provided and for the adequate number of parking spaces to be provided at this site without the need for an exception, exception due to the narrowness of this lot. Open space. The other exception for this project that is requested is for primary open space to be located outside of the rear yard. The T four point five zoning district requires the primary open space to be located in the rear portion of the lot and to be designed as a courtyard. Deviation from this requires an exception. Open space is proposed as a courtyard on both the podium structure at the second level as well as the top of the building in the form of a roof deck. This is not necessarily the most ideal requirement for lots that have alley access and that are narrow. In total, this project complies with sixty-one out of sixty-three required and recommended standards of the Midtown Corridor's Development Code. Please note, the requested exceptions are generally common in the form-based code areas such as the DTSP and Midtown, and have typically been supported in situations where projects fulfill the intent of applicable regulations. Staff believes this project is such an instance. Please note also that staff intends to reevaluate the city's form-based codes, in part to address some of the common warrants and exceptions that are requested and come before the planning commission, at some point in time, more than likely after the general plan update has been completed. Overall, the project complies with the overwhelming majority of the Midtown Corridor's Development Code standards, except in the instance where two exceptions are requested for open space as well as parking placement. Given the aforementioned, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the major design review, coastal development permit, and the two exceptions as condition. Thus concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jane. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Zucker?
Question about the, the two exceptions and, and kind of the, the intent of the, uh, the intent of our requirement to put open space in the rear fifty percent of the, of the lot. To me, it, it makes sense, you know, maybe why, why we might have a, you know, want parking to be in the back, so it's, you know, kind of, you know, the, the community feel of the street, right? Has, has a, you know, kind of shops right up against the sidewalk. But why, why the requirement to put parking or put the open space in the back? What's the intent of that?
Staff, do you have a, some feedback?
Good. Generally speaking, the intent is to, as you said, Commissioner Zucker, to have, um, to create more of a pedestrian-friendly environment at the street level, so you have buildings pushed up to the street, and so you won't have like this suburban style of development, and the intent for, to have more of an urban-style development in certain, in key locations. And so for the form-based codes, they really emphasize pushing buildings closer to the, to the street, closer to the sidewalk, to minimize that suburban style of development and to emphasize urban development, generally speaking.
Great, that makes sense.
Yes, Commissioner McCarty.
So, the design review committee suggested, had three recommendations, and staff believes the applicant team satisfied the recommendations from the DRC, but I saw no reference in the briefing as to how, uh, the applicant is complying or satisfying the dark-sky compliant lighting recommendation from the DRC.
The applicant has agreed to address the, that style of lighting at the building permit phase. Uh, generally speaking, uh, DRC did want to see that style of lighting implemented for this project, but the applicant, which the applicants here today, they can speak additionally to that, but they have agreed to provide that style of lighting at the building permit phase.
And if, and if I can add on to that, it, it's not common to have lighting details at, at this stage, and so it is normally used as a condition of approval.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question for staff? I do have a question for all the commissioners. The first time I saw color rendition of the building was on the screen. Was it not included in your packets either? Okay, so could we put those back on?
I went to the, um, I went, cause it noted which DRC agenda it was at, and I went to that one to see the rendering, so, even though it wasn't, you know, the same design, but it's all colors.
Right. Could we see the front of the building, please?
Yes.
There we go. Yeah, that's, that's the first time we've seen it. Okay. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
Just for the public record, I think I know the answer, but just for the public record, there was no mention of inclusionary housing. So what is the, this is just slightly outside of downtown, and we have not yet, uh, the city count, the planning commission hasn't fully dealt with inclusionary housing, nor has city council voted on inclusionary housing policy outside of the downtown specific plan. But, uh, so what is the applicable law concerning inclusionary housing in this portion of the city?
I can speak specifically to this particular site and this particular project.
Please do.
For this particular site, the applicant has opted not to provide information regarding the affordability of units, given the fact that inclusionary housing at this particular site is not required. Um, and they have not provided the, whether or not, if some of the units are going to be low-income, moderate, et cetera, they have not opted to, uh, participate in the state density bonus law. Therefore, staff evaluate this project and notice, and noted that there aren't any inclusionary housing requirements for this particular project, but the applicant can speak to the affordability of the units.
Okay, um, I actually, I'm not concerned about the affordability per se, just what is the law governing this? I think within your answer, you said the inclusionary housing policy does not apply to this section of town, which is anywhere outside of the downtown specific plan, correct?
It's, it's not so much dependent on the place in town, it's the number of units that are being proposed, and given the scale of this project being only eight residential units, it would not trigger the inclusionary housing ordinance.
What is the number that would trigger that?
Uh, currently, and I'll refer to Peter, I believe it's, is it fifteen?
Uh, if this is rental, then our inclusionary ordinance, uh, currently doesn't apply, uh, regardless of, of, of the size. Uh, if the ordinance that is being worked on, uh, applied to this project, I believe they would have to do one unit. Uh, but one of the things that, uh, council's gonna take into note and we'll talk about at the planning commission when, uh, inclusionary housing ordinance comes back is, uh, when should the revised inclusionary housing ordinance apply? Cause this is a project that's been in the application phase since, uh, twenty twenty, is that right? So, uh, it's possible that, uh, planning commission might not have recommended, or council might not adopt regulations, and, uh, they might have it apply only to new applications, they might not, they might have it apply at a certain date, but, uh, just that there's a possibility it wouldn't have applied to this anyway. If it did, it would have been one unit plus, just based on the math, in loofahs for the decimal amount, um, that's beyond.
Okay, you've answered my question, thank you.
Uh, I do have a question. Is it, is it clear, I, I didn't read anywhere that these were rentals or for sale?
To staff's understanding, communication with the applicant, that these are apartment units and for rental, and for rent.
Okay, so.
And if, if it were ownership, they would have to have a, a subdivision map or a condominium map that planning commission would have to approve.
Right. So could you explain to me the process, let's say, because we've seen this before historically, people apply for and build apartment units, and then at a later date, they convert them to condo? Um, could you refresh our memories on what process goes, um, with a situation like that, please?
They would, uh, at that point in time, can apply for a condo map, as Director Gillie stated, and that condo map would have to be processed by staff, and they, at that point in time, once an apartment come, uh, building wants to convert to a condo, they would have to apply for a condo map and go through that process.
Which means it mu, it would be, it would trigger as if they were building a new, uh, and they would have to comply with all of the condo inclusionary housing statutes, et cetera?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, very good. Seeing none, I'm going to, oh, uh, is the applicant here to make a presentation? Would you like to come up now, please?
Hello, my name is Frank Rogue, uh, this is Lisette Elenes, we're from Era Architects. Uh, we don't have a presentation, we are just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have, uh, questions for the architects? Yes, commi, uh, Vice Chair.
Was there bicycle parking included and/or discussed?
Yes, there is bicycle parking, and it's located, um, behind, um, next to the parking spaces on the, on the rear. Uh, there's a little space there with a low wall where the, uh, long-term bicycle parking and short-term bicycle parking are gonna be located.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. Um, it's a, it's a relatively wide sidewalk in the front, correct?
Yes.
And will it, will it remain the same width as it is now?
Yes, uh, it will remain, and we are taking a little bit of space in the front to propose, like, um, if this is a future coffee shop, to have a little bit of a dining area, um, in that large sidewalk that we have. Uh, there's also a bus stop that occurs on, in front of our, um, building, so there will be also the bench and the, the required, uh, amenities that that requires, so, but it will still remain as a pretty large, I don't have the, the width of it, uh, pretty wide sidewalk.
Okay.
And if, um, and if there's, there's a coffee shop and they do want to have, to, to, uh, put tables outside, they will apply for, for, for that at that time.
Okay.
But we just design with, possibly, that happening in the. But we just design with, possibly that happening in the future, but we are only providing some of the landscaping in the front.
Okay. Another question about the roof, I saw there was an area set aside for solar. Is that an integral part of the plan?
Yes.
Okay, and what will that solar be able to do? Offset all of the tenants' energy use, or just the, the exterior lighting, et cetera, of the building?
The client wants to offset as much as she can. We haven't done a thorough analysis of how much space we have and.
Versus use.
And how much she, she would, it would cover in the future, because she does want to make them, you know, as net zero as she can. We're looking into maybe possibly adding a canopy on top of the open parking spaces that, where she could provide additional solar panels.
Okay, very good. One other question, do you have any idea, I mean, this is nestled between a car parts store and a U-Haul store, somewhat unusual for a residential complex. Any ideas on what is going to happen on the rest of that block? Are there talks of anything else happening?
We know that the auto parts building was sold recently. We don't know to whom, and as far as the U-Haul, I don't, I don't think we, we expect them to move anytime soon.
Because they own the property, so we don't think they're going away for a while.
Yes. This used to be a radiator, radiator shop, but the owner wanted to do a mixed-use building to provide more residential.
Have they done soil testing on the site? Because it was a, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we did a soils, a soils report and civil engineering.
Okay, and it's, it's clear or it needs remediation?
It is clear, no remediation is required.
Very good. My last question is, do the upper units on the third story, do they have views?
Yes.
And that view is over the present city yard?
It, there are some large trees on the alley side, and they're perennial, or, you know, like in the winter, they, they will have more visibility than in the summer. But yes, that, that, that's one of the reasons why we kind of directed, or put the deck in that direction and tried to give the residents as much views of, of the ocean as possible.
And that's one of the reasons too, why we decided to, instead of extending the courtyard at the second level and making that, you know, larger and more expensive also, you know, for the, because of the podium, and there's no views in that, they will just be looking basically at their parking lot below. So that's why we decided to orient it mainly at the, at the roof deck, because that's where they'll have the views.
Yeah, okay, very good. Commissioner Abbey.
I just thought of a question. In the parking underneath the pedestal, is there, are there any storage units for, because usually in condos or rentals, you'll see in the parking area, areas where tenants can store, have some storage. Is that included at all?
No, that is not included in the, in, outside of their apartment unit, but inside the apartments, you would see that there's like a larger closet storage space that we're providing for the units.
Okay, thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we, do we have any public speakers or comments that?
We do not.
Okay, so I don't even need to open a, a public meeting, do I? I'll open the public meeting and close the public meeting. Okay, done. Any discussion amongst commission? Yes.
I'm still, would, I'd like to discuss the compliance with the dark sky lighting recommendation from the design review committee. In the resolution for this project, it's paragraph 23 that addresses lighting, and so there are a number of sentences there which describe requirements for lighting on this project. What I would like to do is add a simple sentence as appropriate that just says, "Lighting shall be dark sky compliant."
Could we have that paragraph put up so that we can just see how it reads now, please?
So we don't have that, the resolution and loaded in the presentation? I can read the condition of that.
That might, that might be helpful, please.
Sure. Condition 23 of the resolution states, "All lighting is to be designed to confine to the light within, confine the light within the site boundaries and to provide safety and security. All building entrances and pedestrian ways are to be adequately lighted. Lighting is to be shielded from neighboring properties and directed at a specific task or target. Exposed bulbs are prohibited unless the community development director determines exposed bulbs are integral to the architectural design." That's the end of the condition. I will add that those are the parameters of dark sky compliant lighting, which is downward shielded, remains on-site, and is, no exposed bulbs.
So Commissioner, would you like to suggest a few words that go in?
Yes, if, if those conditions are in fact verbatim dark sky compliant requirements, then yes, what I'd like to, the sentence that I would like to put at the very beginning of paragraph 23 is, "Lighting shall be dark sky compliant," and leave the rest of the paragraph as it is.
Staff, do you have any comment as to why we would not do that?
We're happy to incorporate that change into the condition.
All right.
I'll just ask that you ask the applicant if they accept that change.
Okay.
They don't have to accept it, but.
Understood.
Having the knowledge.
Applicant, do you have any objections to that addition? Okay.
And if I could add, add one more thing. From staff's perspective, we, we don't have any problem with it. The, the commission raised concerns with putting a design requirement on a past project, fearing we didn't have a standard for it and it would set a precedent. We didn't have a concern with that past one, but under your prior argument, this would set a precedent. Again, we don't have a concern with it, but I just want to point out that it's, it's something the commission has been concerned with in the past.
I have a, I have a comment on that.
Okay, please.
I would be extremely happy to set that precedent right here, right now.
Okay, very good. Any other comments from commissioners on that? Yes, Commissioner Zucker.
Let's give my overall, overall comments on the, the project, you know, but, but to start with, I definitely support Commissioner McCarty's idea that I, I wouldn't mind setting this as a, as a precedent overall. I think, you know, the, the dark sky, you know, Ojai has this dark sky ordinance, right? And I was, I was just there, I don't go to Ojai very often, but I was just, just there last weekend, and, you know, it was just incredible how much of the stars you could see, right? And so I, you know, I think that's brought a lot, you know, to that, that community, both environmentally and just, you know, for, for, you know, people's, people's quality of life. So, yeah, I, I would support that. Yeah, I think it's interesting that you mentioned that the radiator, I think I remember I used to, as a, as a kid, take my, my car as, as a teenager, that radiator shop. But overall, you know, I think I like the, the design of this project, and, you know, from a sustainability perspective, I appreciate that it's got, you know, rooftop solar, bike parking, that it's, you know, there's the, the bus stop right there, I think is, is great in terms of, you know, building and transit corridors. I think the, the open space roof deck looks really nice, and, and it's good, good way to provide that open space, and I think this meets the intent of, of the kind of urban form that we're looking for in terms of that kind of, you know, frontage against the street and, you know, and feeling like a nice, nice pedestrian experience. You know, definitely, I think the, the only thing is definitely disappointed about, you know, the lack of affordable units in this project. You know, I understand that that's not, you know, something that, that, you know, we could require here. I mean, I guess, I guess theoretically, we could say, you know, we won't grant, you know, the exceptions without the affordable units that, that would, you know, force us to through the density bonus program, but, you know, this is a, this is a small project, and, you know, I, I, I don't think we need to be, you know, enforce that, but, but it does feel like a, a missed opportunity, and there's a part of me that because we've delayed the inclusionary housing ordinance for so long, wants to go, every single project that, you know, doesn't have a density bonus, that wants an exception, you know, let's just not approve that exception unless they give us the affordable units, you know, but I, I don't think that's a good way to conduct government to, to kind of be, you know, transactional like that, and, and, you know, and playing hardball with, with, you know, developers over every, every design element to squeeze out affordable units. I think the, the way we should be doing it is having an inclusionary housing ordinance that sets a standard for every, every project in the city, but, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's, it's gone so long without one, you know, that, that does, does make me tempted to, to, to do that as a, as a planning commissioner, because of the urgency of providing, providing affordable housing for our community. I mean, I know this project has been in the pipeline since 2020, you know, but, but we've also been talking about the inclusionary housing ordinance since before 2020, you know, and I know ever since I've been on the planning commission, we've been talking about it being right around the corner, and so, yeah, definitely feeling that missed opportunity and really hope that we're going to get that inclusionary housing ordinance done, you know, as soon as we can, you know, because, because yes, there are things as a planning commission we could do to, to enforce more affordable housing, but, but, you know, overall, I think this is, this is a good project, and I don't want to, to hold it up over, you know, over that, that kind of transactional politics.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Abbey?
Does she want to?
Yes, please.
Okay, I want to say that I, I really like this project. It looks really good, and I'm happy to see that it's a mixed-use project, that it adds to the commercial on Thompson, but even more important, it has eight units of residential, and I think that's much needed. As far as the scale of the building, I think here it's appropriate, three stories, 45 feet. If there were residential directly behind or to the side, or so south of it, north of it, west, east, I would be concerned and would want to perhaps see it scaled down, but that would not be necessary with where this particular building along Thompson is located. I'm glad to see that the third story will be able to have a view of the ocean on the south side of the building. There's a lot to like about this. I like the, open space is something that's important to me, seeing in a project, and the way you creatively incorporated that into the second and third levels was very good. I liked architecturally what you've worked out with staff, the articulation, the color differences. It's, it's, it's very nice looking, and I think you have a really nice project here. So, there's much more I could say, but overall, I think it's very good where it's located and what it accomplishes and how it looks, so congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. I understand we do have a public speaker now, so with that, I'm going to open the public meeting and ask that we allow that person three minutes for comments.
Michael, you may begin to speak.
Yes, I have a, a question about what's happening down in the Thompson corridor between San Home and Seaworth, is that you're beginning to build the buildings high and you're blocking the sky view, and soon it will just become one big wall of buildings upon buildings, and that's a concern. Also, it's not really right that you use public access space on the sidewalk for a seating area, because the owner of the building doesn't want to allow to take that space within their property. So it's not necessary to use public space. We already have a problem with the restaurant down at the corner here of Chrisman and Thompson, utilizing public ass, access for his folks standing on the sidewalk waiting to go into his establishment. So now you build this facility, and now they're going to be able to sit on public access way on sidewalk, rather than accommodating that within the building? Also, from the deck of that building, would the folks that use that be able to look into the neighborhood of the Chrisman Avenue in Midtown from there? Or would the residents on Chrisman see those people on the roof from the street? And what about them viewing into the junior high school from that rooftop? Is that a concern for being able to watch students in the backfield during their activities, during the lunches, and their recesses? Also, please, you're the, you're the commission there that does the design. You have to start putting a stop to large height buildings to the maximum of 45, 47 height, or Thompson's going to be, that's all that Thompson's going to be, and you're going to allow that to happen, and that's going to ruin the view that we get from the Midtown neighborhood, looking down towards the water, and that's coastal zone. So are you in compliance with coastal zone requirements about open space, about seeing the sky and the atmosphere over the ocean, which is part of the coastal zone? You keep building these projects like this project here with that much height, and residents are going to no longer be able to see that skyline, they're just going to see a building like they're already seeing with the new development here that just opened up with the condominiums. Now, when you go into that area of Thompson, all you see is that building, you don't see any more blue sky, and this is just another addition to that. You have to control height of buildings on the Thompson corridor, and a lot of times the city doesn't pay much attention to that Thompson, Thompson corridor between the downtown and the Seaworth. It's kind of an area that's in the gray, not actually defined now what's going to be happening in that area. You have some type of a plan, the plan is concurrent with what residents will be experiencing, and what about traffic that that's going to incur? And will people be parking on Thompson that can't park within that facility? So these are some things that are of a great concern. Now you have this project, you may say, oh well, it was from 2020, so we have to adapt it, but really, do you have to? Do the laws of today apply to projects that are going to be put in place today? Yes, they do. That's the reason now we have a commission like yourself, and we have a city person that's supposed to be monitoring this. So these are some things that I'd like to have looked at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Michael. I would like staff to address the use of public sidewalk if their, if their intent is to put tables out and what the process is, please.
Sure. That's a good question. So in this particular site, there is an existing right-of-way that far exceeds what you would typically see in this type of context. As you see in the site plan, there's from back of curb to where the proposed building is, is 20 feet of right-of-way. So yes, they are proposing a, with, you know, furnishing area where there could potentially be tables and chairs for that eight feet off the building. It leaves a remaining 12 feet of sidewalk, which staff feels is adequate.
But to be clear, that 20 foot, you said, width, is all of that city-owned land, or is part of it private property?
It is all city-owned land, however, the applicant would be required to pay for an encroachment permit to encroach within that right-of-way, so it wouldn't be, they would have to pay to utilize that area.
So an analogy would be if someone wanted to put a parklet in a parking space, they would pay a fee, an ongoing fee, to offset the loss of public space.
Correct.
So to here, they would pay an ongoing fee?
Correct.
Okay. Good point. Based on that, commissioners, any other questions, comments?
I have.
Okay, Commissioner McCarty and then.
Just another, another comment. There was a short discussion of the inclusionary, potential inclusionary housing, which, and that was answered, and it was also noted that we're not really talking about affordability for these, for this site, but just, I just want to put out some information just for calibration within the planning commission. The median household income in Ventura is approximately $80,000 per household, and when you use generally accepted budgeting rules, using 30% of your gross income for rental, that works out to $2,000 a month. These, the units in this project are all between 800 and 900 square feet, single bedroom. Current median rents in Ventura for one-bedroom apartments such as these is $2,100 per month. So essentially, right at the median household income for the city of Ventura. So what that boils down to is, as it appears now, these eight units would be affordable to city residents at the median income level or higher, so not really affordable to lower income. So, again, that's, that is not any criticism of the project, it is just information I'm throwing out to set expectations about who would be able to afford these.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to add to that, that the calculus of 30% of income is a historic number, and unfortunately, due to affordability issues, it's antiquated. People spend 35, 40, 45, sometimes 50% of their incomes on housing, and therein lies the rub. the rub. That's a problem that we have. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I had just a few comments, but before I get to that, I was wondering if staff could address the coastal zone. Question that Michael had.
So on the draft resolution in section six under coastal development permit findings, findings are required to be made for the coastal development permit, and it lists out, for example, that the caller mentioned views would be blocked. There's existing development along this stretch of Thompson Boulevard and staff found that some of the view of the coastline is already blocked and that this would not contribute significantly to blocking additional views from the coastline. Under section six required finding, the development does not significantly obstruct public views of the coastline, views from any public road or from a public recreation area per section 24515070C1 of Muni Code. Public views of the coastline from East Thompson Boulevard are already limited and obscured due to existing development and the amount of mature landscaping that exists within the immediate vicinity of the coastline. Potential views of the coastline from properties at higher elevations, such as Long, East Santa Clara Street and near Cabrillo Middle School or higher, could be impacted, but minimally due to change in topography. As such, the project does not significantly obstruct views of the coastline or views from any public road or from a public recreation area. But the properties located at, as you travel further north, the topography changes. And so views from properties further north, such as Cabrillo Middle School, would not be obstructed by this development. I'll just add to that. I think an important distinction to make out of those findings made for coastal development permit, as Jean just read, it specifically makes the distinction of public views, views from public, public recreation, public right-of-ways. I believe the caller was speaking specifically about private views, which are not protected by the coastal law.
Thank you, staff.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to agree with the other commissioners. I also support the dark sky compliance. I think that's really important environmentally and aesthetically. But I do like this design. I congratulate the designers. I don't really have any concerns with the surrounding lots. I think it's a transitional area and so there will be that transition of residential and commercial and due to the surrounding developments already, I have no concerns with that. And I just wanted to add that I don't have any issues with the exceptions. I think in this case, the size and the shape of the lot require them and that the design does meet the intent of the code. So I did have a few corrections for the resolution. So on page four of the last paragraph, the last full paragraph, the last sentence, there's an ND that needs to be struck, it's just added wording that needs to be taken out. And under the first whereas on the first page, exception should be plural since there are two exceptions. And I know we can't put the resolution, maybe in the future, we can have the resolution so we could put it up on the screen. But the last two paragraphs of number five, it was never clear how the, like where the present courtyard, like where the design of the courtyard is actually located. It just kept saying, you know, we need an exception, it doesn't meet, but it doesn't really talk about how it doesn't meet. So I don't know if that needs to be in there, but I didn't understand the courtyard until you actually put it on the screen. So I'm not sure if anyone else has any comment on that, I just thought it would be helpful.
I'd ask that you put it on the screen and walk us through that, if you could, please.
Sure. Sure. So in the Midtown Corridor Development Code, it requires for this particular zoning district requires the courtyard to be in the rear half of the site on the ground level. It does allow for usable open space in the form of a courtyard, excuse me, the courtyard is usable open space. It does allow for usable open space to be located on a podium structure, but an exception is required. So basically, in the back half of the site, that's where the courtyard, usable open space in the form of a courtyard is supposed to be located. If it's not, if it's proposed to be located outside that back half of the site, then an exception is required.
Yeah, so if that could just be a little bit clarified in there, that would probably be helpful. And then I had one more correction on number eight. It's simple, on the first sentence, replace will with the word with. And that's all I had. Thank you, Chair.
Good catch. Thank you. Okay, further discussion, commission. Yes, Commissioner Zucker.
Just had a really quick addition to Commissioner McCarthy's point around affordability, you know, that the numbers, I think Commissioner McCarthy is citing are for median rents for a one-bedroom, and that's including a lot of much older housing and, you know, in other parts of the city that might be much less desirable than this is, you know, one of the kind of hottest, you know, real estate markets in the city in Midtown. I think it's likely, I don't, you know, I don't know for sure, the applicants haven't shared that information, but I think it's likely that the price will probably be significantly higher than that. I would be really impressed if they offered these units for $2,000 each. You know, I think most of this, the new housing that we're approving, that's not, you know, kind of deed restricted as affordable, is, you know, tending to be significantly higher than that. And so I think, you know, we definitely need to be aware that the cost of most of these market rate units is not even just at the median income for our community, but really, only accessible to the upper end.
Good point. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion here, please? Yes, Commissioner McCarthy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution with the single addition to paragraph 23, which I iterated before.
Okay, very good. About dark skies. Do we have a second to that?
Can we add, I mean, that the corrections to be?
Oh, yes, the corrections as well. Okay, so both of those items?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Question for staff, because if we're setting a precedent, I want to make crystal clear what that means. Could you explain to us what the ramifications of that are, please?
From staff's perspective, we don't necessarily view this as a precedent. It's that the commission believed something like this in the past, adding it onto a project, automatically created one. We don't necessarily think it does because every project has its own location, its own site, and this isn't going to require you to say every project has to do this. We may end up with a rule someday that does say every project does have to do this. So we don't view it as a precedent. I just wanted to point out that in the past argument, a similar thing was called one. Having said that, as I said, we do support the concept and I do believe we are going to end up having an ordinance eventually.
But would it be fair to say that the more we do this, include that type of terminology in projects moving forward, the more, if you will, de facto precedences are set?
Yes, yes, I think it does. And I think a major benefit to this particular item is that it's not a cost, it's not much of a cost increase. You might have to do a little more preparation of plans, but you're not having to get special type of lighting that's not normal, you just don't point it up and have it shielded and so on. So we don't have any concerns with what's being proposed at all.
Okay, very good. Yes, Commissioner McCarthy.
So another follow-on to that discussion. Given that your division supports that concept, the dark sky concept, and given that the resolution packet, to a great extent, is boilerplate, I would propose that from now going forward, the section that calls out lighting, always contain the sentence that I mentioned and make that the default position going forward. In other words, have dark sky lighting as part of the default resolutions as most of this other stuff is just default. And if you're not going to be dark sky compliant, you need to explain why.
Okay, thank you. Peter, can you see, is there anything problematic with doing that?
Yes, Commissioner McCarthy, I would treat that as just informal staff feedback. I wouldn't actually recommend including that in the formal motion because that would be a separate agenda item specific to that matter. So I think we could just treat that as informal staff feedback, but I would recommend leaving the motion as is.
That's fine. I was not proposing to change the motion at all. It was just a comment about future resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Well, riffing on that, what would it take for us to have it as a formal item? And what's the process for that, please?
I would say to make it one of our conditions of approval and to call it out in that manner, we should have the ordinance in effect.
Okay.
I think that any time an applicant is agreeable to doing it, then there's no problem making it a standard in which the other side has to convey why they're not meeting it. There's just a fine line and making any type of rule that applies across the board should go through a longer process.
Right. I know there's a lot on your agenda, so I'm going to ask the question, what steps are needed for it to go through that process? Please.
We would need to either add it to our zoning ordinance or our form-based codes. Those would be either amendments to specific plans or amendments to our zoning ordinance. To have it apply in the coastal zone, we would have to do a local coastal program amendment, which we have unfortunately learned is an extremely laborious task. And so I think from a staff perspective, we can commit to bringing this up and encouraging applicants to accept this, much like we do with many other things. Like, for example, for projects that have more room on it, we normally push for a lot more street trees. We don't have a rule that, not street trees, just trees. We don't have necessarily a rule that says thou shall plant X street trees per square foot, and most of the time, the applicant is agreeable. I think this is probably another case where many applicants will be agreeable, but particularly when it's housing, putting on a requirement on an applicant that doesn't want to do it gets a little more difficult. Having said that, I think 99 out of 100 of the applicants for housing would not have a problem agreeing to a dark sky type condition. So I think we can work with it and get the vast majority of the projects to do it. Doing it formally would take a lot of time, given everything else that's on the plate.
I understand and see the hurdle in doing that. This particular project was using a 25-year-old design guideline, as I recall, and that is something that is due to be updated in the future, correct? Perhaps that could be included in the design guideline when they get to that? And if we could just recommend to staff to keep that in mind as we go through that process? Okay. All right, very good. So we have a motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Abby?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Farquhar is absent. Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagriquest?
Yes.
Chair Comden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the last and only formal item we have, so we move on to staff communication. Does staff have anything they want to communicate?
Yeah, just that we will be canceling the August 10th Planning Commission meeting and the next meeting will be held on August 24th.
And on that agenda, there will be a project, but there will also, we're planning to add an agenda item to provide a memo that lists out what we expect will come forward over the remainder of the year, making an agenda item so we can give you a memo so that you and interested parties don't have to just try to write down what we say in staff communication. So I expect that to be on the 24th. Also, just an FYI, on Monday night, the council did introduce the ordinance and held the first reading of the ADU fire hazard update. The second reading is next Monday, and everything is aligned for the new rules to go into effect on the 31st of August, at which point those affected owners who already had permits in the process would be able to get their permits issued at that time.
Very good. And timely. I have been watching the Oak Fire. I have friends that have had to vacate their homes up there outside of Mariposa because it's fire season and it's raging, so it's timely. Okay, any other comments from commissioners for the good of the order? Seeing none, let's close the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.